...in the meeting, and I think we have four personnel items and one for contract for executive session, is that correct?
That's right. The personnel matters relate to the police department, the transfer station, the sewer department, and the assistant to the town manager. Just brief updates on all those.
And we have anything else?
We've got the one contract.
One contract. I move we go into executive session at the end of the meeting for four personnel and one contract issues.
Do I have to list the contract?
No, you can let them know, though, that it has to do with the police, the old police cruiser.
Okay.
Thanks.
You hear the second, I'll second that.
All the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, no. This is passed. We need to amend the agenda. We have one item that's coming off the liquor board that's not going to be going on tonight.
Right.
So I make a motion that we accept the agenda as amended.
I'll second it.
All the favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion's carried. Next are the minutes of June 5th. Any changes, addition or change of questions to those minutes?
Yes. Second page, Select Board comments. Says Selectman Mills inquired if the Regional Planning Commission had been contacted regarding the furnace road concerns. I already knew that John had contacted them. I had asked him if he'd gotten a response.
I can make that change without having to change the signature page, so you can feel free to sign it if you'd like. I'll make that change.
Yep. Anything else? Next are the orders, any questions on the orders?
I will let people know that we may need signatures for fiscal year-end orders late next week, so stay tuned and we'll be in touch with you if we do.
Yep.
Let's see, there was a $5,600 guard rail installation. Where was that?
It's kind of routine maintenance. We do have a budget item each year for guard rails, and what we do is identify areas where there's been so much damage that new or even used guard rail material can be put in its place. And I don't know the specific locations, but if you'd like me to, I can report on that. It's kind of routine updates and upgrades on guard rails, and to the extent we identify a dangerous location that doesn't have guard rails yet, that's where we put them sometimes.
Well, the thought had gone through my mind, I couldn't think of any project where they would put a whole new-
Right.
-that much, but this is all around town.
It's all around town, yeah.
Well, was that the one on Fire Hill that they put part of it in the wrong spot the first time Chad was telling me?
You know something I don't know.
Oh, yeah. They put it all on, it was supposed to be maybe on both sides of the road, they put it all on one side and had to take it out and move it over.
Okay. I'll make sure that we haven't been charged for that extra work. Thank you for that.
Got anything more, Joe?
Well, reestablish the penny fund.
Yes.
I should know, maybe I do know if you were impressed.
I kind of knew, but I had Pat remind me. The town has several trust accounts that are administered by the trustees of public funds. We at some point learned that the state had taken possession of funds that were dedicated to the penny fund because there had been very little activity in the bank. And sometimes the bank is under orders from the state that if you have an account that has had so little activity, give it to the state, which will hold it as kind of unclaimed property. We learned about that, we got the check from the state, and now this is our payment to put the money back into the bank, or back under the bank, under the management of the trustees through Bradley Keith, which is the head trustee now. So it's basically us redepositing money that we had to recollect from the state.
It's not an Elrick expense, it just re-
No, it's kind of a pass-through of money that was directed to the state in error and given back to the town.
Yeah, Joe, the money was supposed to be turned over into the same account, and they shipped it to a month earlier instead.
Kind of interesting.
Yeah. Well, good question. I don't know.
Okay, you got, and this is more a question I've never heard of this business, Pittsburgh Power Tooth and Blade?
Yeah, that I think is where the Highway Garage picks up some of its equipment. I don't even know if it might be the new business name for Ed Keith's?
I think so.
Pittsburgh Small Engine Repair, I think so.
Oh.
So when there's chains to be bought and chaps and helmets.
Yeah.
The big items were all covered by a VLCT safety grant, which we applied for and got. So some of that was, all that was purchased with a PNSF grant.
Okay. And now you've got Noble Ace Hardware, an inverter generator?
Yeah, Chad, you Jared told me and Chief Hooker, both of us who asked him about it today, it's a generator for the wastewater treatment plant. They have been using kind of a expensive and kind of time-consuming battery system, but they've decided that they wanted to make the investment in a generator that that can be portable around the different locations.
So I presume they shopped around for it?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the only other thing is, you've got a $1,200 fire truck vanity plate?
It's actually six plates, all of whom had their five-year renewals due to DMV.
Oh, six plates?
Two-hundred bucks a pop. And I don't know why the word vanity is there unless maybe there's one of the trucks perhaps with a certain desired plate for show purposes. I don't know the answer to that, why the word vanity is in there. But they are six times $200 each, five-year renewals at DMV.
So it's essentially 40 bucks a truck, then?
No, six times 200, right?
No, but five years, five years-
Yeah, that's true.
At 200 is 40 a year.
I got you.
Okay.
I wasn't very good at math, that's why I went to law school instead.
I've seen that.
Ouch.
Anybody else?
No, I'm done.
Damn good thing, my left hand is bonged up, man.
Yeah, we'd be here all night.
Yeah.
I'd have to bear out.
You can't, we wouldn't have a Guam. Fair roll. Tom, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Chairman. The Pittsburgh Village Farm Touch a Truck Event, just a reminder, is scheduled for Saturday, July 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The Select Board will be having two public hearings on the event ordinance that the Select Board has been considering. They will take place concurrently with regular Select Board meetings tonight, Wednesday, June 19th, and again Wednesday, July 17th at 6:30. The town is advertising a request for proposals, seeking proposals from local contractors to repair and extend the transfer station shed roof, which is leaking, but to repair that and perhaps extend the roof structure over the garbage compactor, which could have the beneficial effect of keeping our garbage less weighty and therefore saving some money on tipping fees. On Wednesday, June 26th, there'll be a pre-proposal meeting at the transfer station for contractors interested in making proposals and learning more about what we're looking for. As you know, Mr. Vice Chair, Lister Dan Adams has resigned his post as town lister, and he has been replaced by newly appointed Lister Nicholas Michael. Unfortunately, both John Ujere and Donna Wilson have resigned from the Lister's office. The town has advertised two new vacancies, and it is hoped that interested applicants will step forward to apply for the vacant posts. John Ujere's resignation was effective immediately, but Donna Wilson was good enough to give the town two weeks' notice and to provide some much-needed orientation and assistance to Nicholas Michael, and will continue to do so through the end of this week. The hope is that together they can complete the grievance process and lodge the grand list before Donna Wilson leaves her post. This would enable the Select Board to set tax rates in July as usual. The state staffer who oversees the work of the municipal listers in this region was visiting today, June 19th, to assess the situation in the Lister's office and to meet with the new Lister Nicholas Michael. As you may know, two of our selectmen, Chairman Tom Hooker and Alicia Malley, will miss some or all of tonight's meeting in order to attend the Otter Valley Unified Union School Board meeting, which takes place unfortunately at the same time that the Select Board meeting does. Selectman Hooker and Selectwoman Malley will be addressing the OVUU Board on the topic of the planned repair and restoration of the Route 7 Village sidewalk and curb and possible use of some BURDIT funds toward that project. We'll probably learn tonight or tomorrow as to what the OVUU Board's vote was. Tomorrow, June 20th, is the deadline for fuel bids and for mowing bids, mowing that is, on all town properties, including groundskeeping here at the town offices. The results will be put before the Select Board at its meeting of July 3rd for review. The next meeting of the Rutland Regional Transportation Council will take place on Thursday, June 27th at 5:30 p.m. Why am I telling you this? The answer is that this meeting will feature a tour of the Southern Vermont Regional Airport, and municipal officials, including town managers and selectmen, are encouraged to attend. There's a flyer in tonight's materials. If anybody wants to come, please let me know, I'll give them your RSVP, because I think there will be dinner provided as well.
They're going to take us to the restaurant down at the airport?
I think that's the hangar restaurant that's catering the dinner. And they'll be, the bus will be there as well to kind of tour you around the runways and projects past and future. Finally, the town offices will be closed Thursday, July 4th, in observance of and celebration of Independence Day.
Thanks, John. Any questions for John? Public comment, do we have any public comments this evening?
Did you want to see about selectmen comments?
Yeah, I forgot about that one. Public board comment.
Why are you looking at me?
Well, I can either look this way or this way.
A couple things from Rutland Regional Planning. Something the town, I don't know if we want to look into it or not, but should be aware of, River Corridor regulations that would lower the percentage if we have a catastrophe, would lower the percentage that we would be responsible for if we were to have those regulations. I think that is the last regulation-
Right.
-that we would need to get down to the lowest percentage. Rutland Regional is also working on highway intermunicipal service agreements, which is essentially if, similar to what the fire departments do with mutual aid, except if our, like, if we had a catastrophe here and Brandon came and helped us out, or Proctor, whoever, as it is now, there is no mechanism for reimbursement. But once they get, they're hoping this summer to get it into regional's bylaws so that there will now be a reimbursement mechanism, so that we would be able to, similar to fire departments, use other people's or other towns' municipal highway departments. And that's about it.
Great, thanks, David. Joe, you have anything?
Is this a quite common thing that happens where the municipalities trade work would-
No, it's, from what I understood last night, it's something new. The legislature, I don't know if it was this year or last year, allowed this to happen. So now, once Rutland Regional gets it in place, because as it is now, it can happen, but there's no mechanism for, like Pittsburgh reimbursing Brandon or vice versa.
We've had a few informal situations where we've helped out and gotten paid a reasonable rate, but this would make it more official, more reliable.
Yeah.
Question for you, and maybe the Planning Commission people or ZBA people might know, has the town ever taken up and considered River Corridor regulations as are being recommended? Do we know whether there's any particular reason why we haven't gotten them in place? Don't know.
We haven't.
Okay.
Sorry, I mean, while I was on the board, we haven't. We've been busy with other stuff, so we just, they never got, we never got to it, but-
Sure. Thank you.
Now, public comment, if any. Hearing on, we're going to change the format around a little bit, we're going to go recess the Select Board and convene as-
Public hearing.
A public hearing for the event ordinance, and I just want to let people know that we're not here this evening to make any decisions, all we're looking for is input from the citizens, see what their wishes are.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I can just give the overview, which is that in response to the police chief's suggestion that the town consider a public events ordinance, there's been some discussion and a draft ordinance has been generated based upon an ordinance that's in place in the town of Randolph. They developed one, you know, 30-plus years ago. Since that time, we've received some additional input from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, which has not made its way into the draft ordinance as yet, but it's food for thought for the Select Board as to whether there should be any changes to the current draft that's out there. But the idea of these public hearings is to follow the law, which requires that whenever there's an ordinance of this type contemplated, there must be a couple of public hearings to hear the concerns and hear the suggestions of the population, and that's why we're here tonight, for the first of two public hearings.
So the floor is open for discussion.
Can you share what the Vermont League of Cities and Town said?
Oh, absolutely, I can give it to you, I can give you the documentation, it's several pages.
In essence?
It's a template of their own version of an events ordinance, so. The reason that Chief Warfel had suggested it is that there have been occasions when there have been large events in town that we learned about maybe accidentally just a couple of days before, which would have involved the police and rescue folks, maybe fire folks, being at the ready to deal with any problems that developed. And the idea was, if possible, it would be good if we knew these events were going to take place, big events, that were going to possibly require town services in advance so that we can be better prepared for that. That's, I think, what Chief Warfel thought was his rationale for suggesting it.
Mark.
What's a big event?
Well, we can pick a number out of the air, which is what Randolph has done and which was Pittsburgh has done now. We've taken the number of 150 people at a same property who have paid a fee for admission. So it's kind of a commercial event that charges money. 150 people was a number that we selected for the first draft of this.
So this wouldn't cover a private event where there's not one charged?
Certainly not intended to, that's not the intention.
Linda?
Well, I'm kind of concerned about this because, to me, it's Big Brother again, and I don't think that some of the stuff we really need. We still are a small town, I don't know. It's almost like somebody's got something against someone else and this is why we're doing it, type of thing. It's, I don't know if it's really necessary.
Has there been demonstrated need up to now for this?
Well, again, I think when Chief Warfel suggested it, he pointed, for example, to the powwow that took place at the bottom of Elm Street a couple of falls ago. Okay, I'm sorry. And his concern was, wow, if we hadn't read the mountain times, we might not have known about it, and even so, we would have liked to have had more notice to be ready in case there were problems or the need for emergency services. And that was kind of the poster child for how, what kinds of things we'd like to avoid happening in the future. Not avoiding the powwow, but avoiding being ignorant of the powwow by us being given advanced notice of it through a permit process.
Bill?
How does this affect religious services that may have more than 150 people in attendance? Does a permit required for Sunday Mass, say for example, at St. Alphonse's Church?
I certainly wouldn't think so, because there's no price of admission.
It's unclear.
Well, there's no price of admission.
But there is, there is for the harvest dinner.
There is for the harvest dinner and bingo.
Bingo.
Are permits required for that?
That wasn't the intention, but that's a good thing to bring up so that we, yeah, but that is not, I mean, the intention, from what I understood of this, is a commercial event where somebody's charging money and providing a service or a whatever for somebody where they're charging money.
For a dinner?
For a dinner, that's, but that's-
And bingo, you're charging?
It's supposed to support the church. One major.
Yeah, no, that's, again, that's something that we-
I'm very concerned with that because I know a dinner, what a dinner is-
Yep, yep, no, that we did not think of, so that's why you're here to enlighten us.
But in marriage, we would-
No, you don't pay, you don't, well, you pay, but not, you don't pay for admission to a funeral.
But if somebody's having a reception after a family is paying-
Yeah, but you're not charging people to come to it. That's, it's charging people to be at an event.
Okay.
Was what triggered this.
What about Kat, Sagamon or-
Wait a minute, wait a minute, Linda, wait a minute, Bear's at the floor.
I'm sorry. I'm concerned, I would have, going back to John's example of the powwow last summer, my guess, even if we had this ordinance in effect, these people would be totally unaware of the ordinance and would still have their powwow with nobody knowing about it. So going back to what this lady back here said, in a way, you're sort of maybe penalizing those people who are going to play by the rules anyhow, and those people that, you know, just unaware, are not creative registered, so they're a bad choice.
Linda?
What about places like Sagamon and Betsy Cox? They charge, they certainly have 150 people there. I think you're, I think you're opening up a big can of worms.
Mark?
I've got to agree with Linda, I don't think we need that in a town this size. I think that just sounds like busy work.
Bear?
You know, there's a lot of nonprofits in town that are working really hard to help build community vitality. At the Pittsburgh Village Farm, we're trying to really build community and make, Pittsburgh's a wonderful place, it's a wonderful community, we want to do whatever we can to make it better, you know, we don't want an adult bookstore there. So, I know, I know, but I'm just saying, I know protect-
I assume she's speaking for herself, right?
We're trying to protect the village center, and that was an extreme example, but we want to protect the village center and we want to keep it beautiful, and it's very hard to find volunteers. There's wonderful people in Pittsburgh, but everybody's stretched very thin. And if we have a flea market with $5 a table and you're going to charge us 50 bucks to help build the Pittsburgh yard sale weekend and make it even better, I mean, it's just a killer, it's just a killer. And then, and to add paperwork and all these layers, and it sounds like we're just doing this because there was a powwow that we didn't know about. I mean, if it's not broken, let's not try to fix it. Don't add this to the community. You want to keep our volunteers, you want to have people keep doing all the great things they're doing, and to put this burden on them is really disheartening, especially for a volunteer like me.
Nancy?
Randolph is a much bigger community than we are.
They had a much higher threshold for number, too.
Much, yeah, but still, it's a much bigger community. And they also have their big performance studio.
Chandler Hall.
Chandler Hall. Man, it's a whole different cut of fish, and I just think this is over-govermenting and over-regimentation that isn't necessary. I think anybody who has their head on straight is going to inform our Chief Warfel of something happening, and if it's going to be large, it's going to be up to that organization to cover it, on their own, with their own-
Security.
-security and police.
Make a calendar of events for the town, and then ask people to make sure to put their events on the calendar events, and then Chief Warfel will know what's going on.
Mark?
Maybe it'd be good for the Select Board to establish a rate they might charge an organization for use of the police department if they did need them for directing traffic during an event, and that way it could be requested and the town would get something back for that.
I think we've done that.
We have done that.
We've done that in the past, Mark.
Is it established already now?
Yeah, I think there's a, either a $40 or $50 an hour rate for when they have to be present, for example, at a big event at the rec center, for example.
Yep.
I don't need to worry about it.
Anyone else? Mark?
What happens if you have an event and surprise, you have 150 people and you had no idea that many people were going to come?
You're going to go to jail.
I'm going to get fined. What's a fine? It's huge.
Go get a pardon.
Mike said he'd put the cuffs on gently, though.
I'll let him go ahead.
Got one final question here. Would this apply, say for example, on my own property, if I decided to have an anniversary party and there were 151 people in attendance to help me celebrate?
Are you charging?
You're not charging that.
You're not, no. Unless you're going to charge your relatives to come to your friend's.
That's true, but I just, I want to, I want to be sure, it's just only if there's a monetary charge for the service.
Yes.
Bear?
But what's interesting there is, what is the difference from a traffic control perspective? If he has 150 relatives and friends for his anniversary party, and somebody else has an outdoor concert of 150 people and they're charging, is there any difference from the perspective of, you know, safety and traffic control?
Well, I guess I would like to think, I mean, I don't, don't know where he lives, but I would like to think that if he's going to have 150 people at his home, he would have provisions for parking.
And we did. It's retired.
That's what you do.
Right. Versus-
Responsible person.
Yeah. Well, I think, like, the Morgans pointed out, a responsible person is going to let the police department and the fire department know they're having this event. I think the issue was, we had some people from out of town that just came in and did something.
Who owned that property? Who said, okay, let's have it here?
Somebody who squats. He's kind of a squatter.
Oh, okay, yeah.
He does own the property.
He does own it, however, he comes and goes.
Anybody else for a public hearing tonight?
I vote just to, not that I have a vote right now. Just for the town to be informed of events, you know? I mean, don't charge us $50 for a family concert that we're trying to, you know, just enjoy and have people have fun, community.
All right, I thank everybody for coming this evening, and thank you for all the nice comments we got, and we'll take them all into consideration.
Very helpful, actually.
And now we'll adjourn the public hearing until-
I had one coming.
Joe's glad you're here.
Probably nobody knows it, but for the last few years, we have hosted, behind our sawmill, of annual competition for all of the vocational school forestry programs in the state of Vermont. All the vocational forestry classes have been coming to our place. It's an all-day, well, 9 o'clock in the morning till 4 o'clock in the afternoon, it's an event for these school kids to have a competition from all over the- It's an event for this, these school kids to have a competition from all over the state. How many there is there, I don't know, but there's well over 150 because there's a school. But every county has a vocational school, so there's a busload from every county, plus other people. It's, we don't charge, there's no charge for anything. We help them. We furnish stuff. We're glad to do it. It's part of the forest industry and I'm glad to support it. But I would hate to think that I would have to say no to the state's forestry people. Can't come no more. That's not right. I've, my, I'm against this. I want you to all understand. I may be the only one on this board that's against it, but if that's the way it is, so be it. I may not be. But we haven't had any trouble, that I'm aware of. Until we have an event where it calls for a regulation to be implemented, I'd be for it. But that hasn't happened. And I said once before here when we were talking about it, and I'll repeat myself, within 20 minutes, with the telephone communications that's available, we could probably have 75 state troopers, sheriffs, and law enforcement people from every town in the county in this state, right here at this building, if we wanted them, if it was an urgent need. Now, they had a little show down there by the Gorm Bridge, this Indian party they had last year. I heard about it and drove down there. Didn't bother me at all. More power to them. To say, well, it's only going to be for events who are selling tickets and making money. You could have just as big a problem at a, at a home event as you can on a commercial event. My feeling is, until there's a problem, why create this bureaucracy, this regulation? I live under enough regulations in my business and I'm sure some of you people are in the same situation. You can't do anything without getting permission anymore. This free country we used to boast about is not free anymore. I, I think we should draw the line until there's a real need for it. I would change my mind. Thank you.
I also like Barb's idea. It's incumbent, I'm calling on the people in the town, to inform the town what's going on. And if you don't, then, then, then there might be something. Down there at the powwow, you would have had to handcuff horses because they were the ones that were in the road.
I've got one more comment before we get out of here.
Go ahead, Bill.
Would this apply to, say, the haunted house as well, the fire department?
Isn't interesting.
And the way I, the way I read, what is written, I'd say.
I would assume so.
You bet.
And you charge.
Pittsburgh town?
Pittsburgh days.
You don't charge.
You don't charge for Pittsburgh days.
What about the library having an event? I don't know if they charge or not. Sell books? Just some things to maul around.
As I said, I thank you for all your comments this evening. They're very helpful. And we will close the public hearing part of our meeting tonight until, when, the 19th?
July 17th.
July 17th. So maybe we'll see.
Don't come back.
No, no, you're always welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good night. So you want to get to the planning commission members if you want?
Yep.
Is that recessed or closed?
Can I ask a question while, before you?
Then that hearing is adjourned. The next one's a separate hearing.
Is there any discussion on what I read in the Herald about the siren from Chittenden?
Yes, there will be.
Later, yeah.
On the agenda.
Tonight?
Yep.
All right. We have some more people here, so we're going to take the planning commission next regarding development of a town energy plan. And Mr. Winslow and Mr. Conway.
Thank you. Rick Conway, as well as Chuck Charbonneau, Kevin Wall, and myself are here tonight representing the planning commission. We would ask for some guidance and direction from the select board tonight. The select board sent us a project to put together a solar panel plan for Pittsburgh. We were told that the town had a plan for solar panels, preferred siting. The town would gain substantial deference with the public service board. The solar plan has now turned into a full energy plan as dictated by the VNR and the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. The plan now must meet 14 specific and very detailed criteria to be approved by the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. We were originally told by the RRPC that the energy plan would be a standalone plan and would not have to be part of the recently completed and approved Pittsburgh Town Plan. But now the rules have changed. Now it must be part of the town plan according to the RRPC. That means reopening the town plan for amending. The planning commission has reviewed this at length, consulting with the RRPC staff member Barbara Hinoise-Pulling and legal review with the town attorney Gary Cuff. And the planning commission's position is on this, first of all, we do not want to reopen the recently completed and approved town plan process again. Secondly, we see the 14 criteria in the energy plan outlined to be excessive on demands for the town and the residents. Third, the RRPC already has its own energy plan. And lastly, even if the town gains substantial deference, the Rutland Regional Planning Commission can reject anything the town approves and the public service board can do whatever it wants. Given these issues, we ask the select board to give us direction on if we should proceed or what we should do on this issue. Thank you.
Well, we'll certainly take it under consideration, but I don't think we're going to make any motion tonight to approve that because we're short two members. So we'll wait until at least the next board. And if you could, Mark, if you could give us some information like on the 14 points, what they are, so we could take a look at them?
I'll give you copies both on this and the 14 points.
That would be great. That would give us some information so we can maul over. Okay? Rick?
Just one other thing I'd like to say. There's already that map. If you see them, they're up here and for solar panels to go in, there's areas that are good, preferred. We've looked at these maps. There's been some solar projects, and this is just some of the discussions we had in the planning commission. There's been some solar projects down in Pittsburgh. You probably know where quite a few of them are. There's one down by Mark Winslow, one by Mark Kowski, one off the truck group. And we haven't really heard any problems. We did talk to some people that were suitable in these areas and they didn't want to have their land specifically rejected for putting solar in. So, in listening to Gary Cuffler at our meetings, we asked him a lot of questions because we had met with Barbara Hinoise-Pulling twice. And we were, as Mark said, and I'll repeat, we were under the understanding that it could be a standalone document where we wouldn't have to affect our plan. And then, as it turned out, the plans that they were recommending, like Sudbury, they added, I can't remember, what, 30 something pages to their plan. So it wasn't even a standalone. So, we had Gary review the state statute to give us a, what direction we should go with from, from a legal perspective. And he said, no, we would have to put it into our plan. So, there were some areas that our town plan, when it was adopted, did not include some of the recommended areas that the state wanted in our town plan. And we got our plan, we got our plan approved. So, we really don't want to mess with that plan. And we're good with our town plan. And one other thing that came up, one of the members brought up, the energy plan is an ongoing thing like the town plan, where requirements, if you have an energy plan, you're going to have new regulations. And when I hear Joe talking, that's what will be coming down the road. So, and we do already, as Mark said, the Rutland Regional Planning Commission has an energy plan. And they have weighed in on some of the energy projects in some of the surrounding towns, Brandon and Robbs there, all the town. That's it.
Okay. Joe?
Is it safe for me to assume that you people are happy with what you've got for a town plan now and you'd like to leave it alone and just go forward? That's what I'm kind of getting.
We, we have no issue with the idea of an energy plan and designing something, you know, for the town. But given what they're putting in front of us and having to put in a town plan, we, we don't think that's a good option.
In my position.
We're looking for your, your guidance on what you'd like us to do.
My position, and just being one member of this board, is you people are running the planning commission. You're going through this with a fine-tooth comb. I feel as though you guys, what you decide is best. Unless I spend a lot of time tearing it apart, I'm not going to be able to make a better decision. So that's why I ask if your consensus is that you just leave well off alone and go forward. And I would be behind whatever you decide.
We are coming back because originally it was assigned to us from the select board about designing a solar plan, siting plan. And it's, it's kind of morphed into something a lot bigger now. And we wanted to make you aware of it and then give you time to look at this and digest it and let us know what you want us to do.
Before you spend more time spinning your wheels on it.
Yeah, yeah. And we have spent quite a bit of time reviewing this and that's what we, that was our determination with summary.
Thank you.
Great. David?
And I, I will reiterate what both Mark and Rick have said. When I, as former chairman of the planning commission, when this started, I met with Barbara Hinoise-Pulling. And she assured me that we could do this as a standalone document because we clearly do not want to reopen up our town plan. It was contentious getting it through Rutland Regional. We got it through. And in my personal opinion, we would not get it through again. So, we do not want to go down that road. My feeling is, again, is we can write up an energy plan for the town of Pittsburgh and write up we want, what we want for a plan, not necessarily following their guidelines, but something to be added to our town plan, whatever, you know. Again, not to be approved by Rutland Regional. We'll write up what we want for our town, like we did our town plan, and have it. And, I mean, the Puck is going to do what the Puck is going to do, the Public Utility Commission. They're going to do what they're going to do. And the due deference or significant, whatever it is.
Substantial.
Substantial deference. Yes, it gives us a little more voice, but they're still going to do what they're going to do. And I think even if we have something written up as a standalone energy plan for the town of Pittsburgh, because my feeling when I was chairman was, we could write it to show the state, because Pittsburgh is a very rural town, we don't have, we have one store. We don't have doctors. We don't have, I guess we have a lawyer. We don't have dentists. There are many things in Pittsburgh that we do not have. We are not a Brandon. So, their contention that everything has to be pushed into the village center will not work here. And I think we could write up an energy plan that would show that the people who live on the outskirts, like the majority of the town do, can be just as energy efficient as someone living in a village center. Because whether you're living in the village center in Pittsburgh or on the outskirts, you've still got to drive to Rutland or Brandon or Middlebury to get your services. And when I was chair, that was what I was hoping we could do, to show that. Because I think it's something the state needs to see, that, no, we don't all have to live in the village center.
Rick, one point that you're covering is when the, it used to be the public service board, now it's the public utility commission. They always got to keep changing the hands.
Yep.
The town has standing to go to the hearing. It's a public hearing. Public service board, Puck or whatever, you know, a public utility commission has a hearing. And there's nothing to stop residents from going to those hearings. And I believe the town have, automatically has a party status, like party status for Act 250. So, the select board had a position on it. And this town plan that we're talking about is the town plan that the select board approved. That was the process. We had our thing with it and we brought it to people and we had a couple of juggling acts with things that were at the last minute. And we got it through and we're done and we're set for eight years with it.
Right.
So, I think we got a lot of breathing room and kind of building on Joe's thing. We've got four that I mentioned tonight, solar projects, and they haven't been an issue.
Well, we'll certainly take it, we'll put it on the next agenda, John, to make sure everybody gets to the material and we'll, we'll, as long as we wait for a full board before we act on it.
Thank you.
We all went to the other two members. Okay. Now, back to the regular business, full business. Funding the Chittenden Dam breach alarm siren.
Yeah, as you will remember at the last meeting, Jen Saterakis from East Pittsburgh was here. She also works with the town of Chittenden on emergency services and planning. And she's long been an advocate of preparation for the unlikely but very scary event of a possible breach of the Chittenden Dam. And there's been meetings for the last year and a half of a committee consisting of people from Pittsburgh, Chittenden, Rutland Town, and Rutland City about how to be best prepared for that eventuality if it ever arises. And as part of that, she has worked with her colleagues in Chittenden on setting up an emergency alarm siren, knowing that it'll be just a matter of a few minutes before the cascade of water would come down that river valley and, and cause havoc all through Chittenden and eventually downstream. So she said at the last meeting that she's come up with some grant money through FEMA and with help from GMP to buy some sirens, but on testing, they turned out not to be loud enough to notify everybody in the dangerous, in the danger zone. So she said she's done her best to find sources of revenue, but has come back to Pittsburgh to see whether the folks in Pittsburgh would want to make an appropriation toward the purchase of additional hardware. I think she talked about a budget of $10,000 to $12,000 for this. And the board said that they would consider it and at the next meeting, discuss the matter further. So here we are at the following meeting. And I think Linda Whedon also wanted to be heard on that topic.
Certainly. Linda, go ahead.
Well, the only thing is, we were told when the siren was going to go, and we actually went outside to try to hear it. And we could not hear it in our house. And we're supposed to be able to.
And you're in that danger zone along with Jen.
Yes.
Yeah. East Pittsburgh.
And going back, John, what you said, they have the equipment. She's looking for the money to install it.
Okay.
Because they got.
Three donations.
They got, well, no, they got two donations from Vermont Yankee and $500. They bought one off of somebody in New Hampshire who wasn't using it. So, it's installation money that she's looking for.
Got it.
And so, yeah.
Electrical maintenance.
And then, that $10,000 to $12,000 installation money, but then there's a continuing $2,400 a year worth of electrical bill to keep the things up and running.
And she is talking to GMP about both the electric costs and whether they can do more to fund some of this. But she had the clear impression she left us with that whatever she's hoping to get from them probably would not be enough to get the project done.
Again, I appreciate everybody's input on that, but I think we ought to make this decision with a full board at the next meeting.
Well, we won't have a full board at the next meeting, but I won't be here.
You're going to call in.
I can call in, yes.
You can call in.
I'll do my best to call in. And, and I guess I'll make my opinion though now. I, I don't have an issue with us assisting, putting in the unit that will notify this lady and the other, there's what, 30 homes that'll be affected?
Pittsburgh homes, yeah.
I do have a problem with paying a continued electric bill. I think that should be on Green Mountain Power because it's their dam.
Green.
And if that thing lets loose, that couple thousand dollars a year is a small price for them to pay to save some people's lives. That's my personal.
Did you, if we don't get you, did you have any kind of range of dollars that you would suggest donation from the town?
Uh, well, if they're looking for 10 grand, that's $3,300. So, you know.
Something in that neighborhood would be fine with you?
Four, yeah, three to $4,000 would be my, yeah, for the one unit which would notify them.
After the sort of 47, the, I'm not sure if it's the state or the federal people that have control or guidance over that system up there. And I know, when I was a young fellow, I remember, but I don't remember everything. But I'm sure that that was looked at very closely and it was protected. The people were protected as much as it possibly could towards another flood. I'm, I'd like, to the people that are promoting this, have they ever came? they ever came before this board with a list of the things, the way that has to be monitored and operated? That dam is very much regulated in a safe way. I'm pretty sure, I wouldn't bet my life on it, but no water is ever supposed to come over that spillway. That was one of the stipulations of the new dam. They're supposed to keep it drawdown. That means that they never could have them splashboards four feet high that they had that caused the flood. They broke and let four feet of water down.
Right.
They can't do that anymore. Nobody's ever given us the information on what kind of regulations and what safety provisions are attached to that dam right today. I have no problem with people that want some extra security up there in that neighborhood. That's not all bad. But we turned down Pittsburgh's support of that project when it first started. And I think we should review why we did that. Do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think, John, you should be able to get the, get that information.
Yeah, I get you the minutes of that meeting, that the board denied it. But I know that the sentiment was, yes, this is a disaster that we want to avoid. But the probability struck some of the selectmen as so remote as to perhaps not justify it.
If you didn't get the regulations that Joe gave us.
Oh, yeah. And I can tell you that, again, these last 18 months, there's been planning for what would happen in the event of an emergency. And each meeting is a GMP executive. And I'm sure that when the time comes that the plan is done, and I think it'll probably be in these next few months, the emergency action plan for the whole region, that would probably get a formal presentation about what the issue is, what steps are in place now, and what the emergency action plan consists of. But it's kind of a work in progress. But if you wanted to hear from somebody from GMP, I'd be happy to invite somebody to tell you.
Maybe we should wait until we get all the information.
Yeah, well, that's fine. And I think, Joe, I think the big concern is an earthquake. In talking with that lady, there is a fault line right near that dam. That's their, you know, probably the biggest concern.
Probably even bigger than that could be a terrorist attack.
Either. Those are the two, the two big ones. Yeah.
And-
But they do monitor the water levels. And they tell us every time they do a big drawdown, for example.
That dam, I'm sure, is well-regulated. I don't know what the regulations are. And, I mean, I don't want to pull the rug out from under anybody that lives below it because they live, but if I lived below it, and I was so scared that I couldn't live there without a siren, maybe I'd think about planting a higher ground. I hate to say that, but I'd move up onto the CV lot there on the ridge there to the east of it.
I think we'll take Joe's request that we get more information before we make a decision.
Just tell me what you have in mind in the way of more information. What systems are in place now to prevent a catastrophe? Is that what you're looking for?
What are the regulations that go with that facility? There must be, there's got to be documentation somewhere. I'm sure there is.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I know, all I know from planning commission base, Dave Soule tried to get the map of where that would go. And they were pretty tight-lipped on that. So I just know how much you will be able to find.
Yeah, nobody wants to generate fear or alarm at the worst-case scenario. The key is to have key folks in the governments of these units aware of it so that in the unlikely, very unlikely event that there is a catastrophe someday, that they're prepared with an action plan to take steps to deal with it. Road closures, you know, mutual aid agreements, V-Trans, A&R, all those kinds of things.
Okay.
As massive an event as that was in '47, I'm pretty sure there wasn't even one life lost, if I recall. I've got a book on it. And I'm pretty sure there wasn't even, it was miraculous. I don't think there was one life lost. Do you know anything different about that?
No, that's true.
That is true. That's what I had, as I remember here, which was marvelous.
All right. I think we're set for that.
Okay. Did you want to revisit the issue of the energy plan or just tee it up for the next meeting?
Tee it up for the next meeting. Discussion of the plans for the police cruiser.
Yes. And that can be an executive session follow-up. But suffice to say, in a public session, that the town had offered, the town of Chittenden, the possibility of purchasing their police cruiser that we intend to retire when the new one is delivered in a couple of months. The town of Chittenden was not interested in purchasing the cruiser, but has suggested that at least there might be a possibility of a discussion of a lease arrangement without any details forthcoming from them. And as you know, the town already has an offer to take that cruiser off the town's hands by way of a trade-in to the dealership that's providing the new cruiser. Another option that we were considering is to use that trade-in value as a floor to a govdeals.com kind of auction, online auction, to see if we can do better. So those are kind of three options before you. But you'll want to discuss it, I'm sure, in executive session.
Okay. That's it. Anything else on the cruiser? That's it for old business. Last time on our new business is review external auditor's fee proposal and confirm the plan's retention for 19 audit.
Yeah, I don't even know that action is required, Mr. Chairman. But I do want to let the folks, or the newest member of the select board, know that last year, we talked about fees with our external auditor Sullivan and Powers. And last year, they suggested, hey, if we want to get a hold on annual fee increases, let's sign a three-year contract with very modest increases of, I think, 2% each year, two and a half percent. So we've already agreed last year to that three-year plan. So I think that all that needs to be done is signatures on both versions of this original document, with us holding on to one and us sending the other one to Sullivan and Powers.
Okay. Sullivan's reasonable.
One thing I did notice in some of the stuff that he wrote up, something about him writing off, well, he put down $11,000. I think he meant $1,100.
I think it's a little puffery probably to show what a great deal the town's getting by having him already taking some of the extra work that we have requested of him and discounting it. Whether it's $11,000 or $1,100, I take it out with a grain of salt. Somebody trying to sell me a service. No disrespect to Chad. We like his work.
No, but the $11,000 was, that was a little, a little too fluffy for me.
What do they call that? Truthful hyperbole. Truthy.
Truthful hyperbole.
Truthy.
Truthy hyperbole, maybe, yeah. I believe the letters B and S cover it the best.
Yeah, so it's just two copies of the same thing. We'll hold one and send the other one off. And Mr. Acting Chair, I wonder if you wanted to open up for public comment to get an update from our colleagues who've just arrived.
I don't think we do.
The newspaper is here. He probably wants to know.
Well, the newspaper was up there also.
Oh, wow. You got here much earlier than you did.
Selectman's comments. We'll open in selectman's comments.
Selectman's comments. But we, I think, tempted a very eloquent presentation.
You did a great job.
You did a great job. I did a fairly good one myself. I thought it was a good job. I was very nice.
Did it pass?
No.
Not more than a good job, then.
It didn't?
It did not pass.
Only one yay vote.
Only one yay vote. Our own Pittsburgh reps don't think that's a good use of bird of money, which we disagree. But there we, there we are.
It's a dead issue now.
It's a dead issue at this point.
It's over. It's over and done with. In Colorado State, don't make it, keep your check.
I will. It's a shame.
Butch did go with us. It's a shame. The state did, and it's in this year's 2020 budget, considered $200,000, $50,000 for engineering, which is going to start engineering now. Butch did mention, and I'll bring to the board, you might want to kind of reconsider at some point in time. There are some other options. Maybe there could be some further grant money if we go after it, some other structures. Maybe not quite the full $50,000, but maybe come up with another $25,000. If we did, that's maybe something we might want to reconsider and still get the project done. I personally think the project should be done. That's my, I mean, I hate to see some kid get hurt. I've sat there, I sat there the other day, I wish, I shouldn't have, I didn't have my thing with me, to take of cars, well, at least you can attest to this, when they stopped to turn into Furnace Brook Road, cars pass them on the right. And if there's somebody there, they're going to nail somebody with these tires. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when.
Well, the other day, I went through, and there was, it was an out-of-state car.
And they just walked through.
No, they were parked on the sidewalk texting.
Yeah.
And I'm sure they thought it was-
By the road.
On the shoulder.
There's no differential between, between the two.
And again, I'll bring up, if none of this pans out, the possibility of just going to the state and saying, because I can't believe for the $26,000 we've got in the village fund, we couldn't get curbing run down through there and just do the curbing, just delineating. I think that's something we need to consider, too.
Just do curbing.
Just do curbing.
I could do that.
Of course, whatever we want to do, we need V-Trans.
I don't, I don't see what you're doing there.
Well, it's worth asking. I mean, at least we're, we're showing that we're trying to do everything we can to do this, which puts the liability back on the state where it belongs.
The school board's big thing to us was, why didn't you go to the taxpayers' national money? Basically, because we were asking for so much tax, we tried to hold the line and looking for different sources of funding.
They're also wondering, why now?
And why now, all of a sudden? Oh, I see. No, because it's getting worse. And there's a lot more traffic now than there used to be a few years ago. There's no question. Traffic is a lot faster.
A lot more distracted traffic.
Yeah.
Well, everybody's driving and texting.
Yeah.
Probably, probably within the last month, I come down through here, and just about opposite the turn to the Furnace Road, a state trooper had a car pulled over, and they were both totally on the sidewalk. So if somebody was walking up through there, that wasn't a very wise place to be writing a ticket. I didn't think.
No, no.
But that's okay, I guess, if you're in the right kind of a car.
I personally think we should still do our due diligence and try to go forward if we can, find some other funding and see what we can do.
Find some other options.
I mean, we bite the bullet and say, hey, you know.
Maybe ought to put more pressure on the state to move this project forward.
Well, we tried that, too. Well, and the best, even, that's not even in the funding book for 2028. No, it's not even in the book.
Oh, man.
So we're talking.
So you're talking.
You know, Butch actually brought the whole-
He actually brought it. He's like, I can show you where your funding is. He says it's not even, not even in there. So.
If it's, it's serious.
But he did show us our sidewalks in there, and it spells it out. Sidewalk in front of Los Obso and right on that part. So I hate to see us lose that money, too. But I think we, Mr. Chairman, we need to see where we can do some more funding.
If this is as serious a safety issue as we're talking about, why shouldn't that be done before any more projects on Route 7 upgrade? Why shouldn't that be the next thing?
No, that's the problem.
If it's that important an issue.
Typically, I'm sure, I don't know, but I assume V-Trans would say typically that's the last part of your project when you reconstruct the road, is the sidewalks.
That's why we're giving-
Because then it boxes them in.
Right. That's why Butch, they are giving us this grant is because of that. Because they know that they pushed us off so many years. That's why you're getting the $200,000 now.
But again, what is their impetus for pushing off doing our village? Because I mean, clearly, from the mobile station south, is the road ideal? No. But it's clearly better than our section in the village.
It's the right of way. It's the complexity of so much dense development.
And so they still haven't got the-
They still haven't done their design.
No.
The other segments are much further along in design and in right of way acquisition.
But again, there's still a lot of property owner holdouts that won't give up.
There's a lot of property holders from the Hockey Barn, which he called it, on Route 7.
The Hockey Barn.
To the Village. There's a lot of easements.
Segment, segments three and four.
Segment three and four.
The red wings.
Detroit, Detroit Red Wing.
The old stonehouse.
The old stonehouse. The stonehouse.
The old stonehouse.
Close to Route 7, the big red barn.
You pass it like-
Oh, you're talking, I was, well, I'm thinking in the Village, and you're talking.
We're talking north.
Yeah.
But that's why that segment is, there's so many problems with it. They pushed that one away. That's one of the last ones to do.
That's probably the deadliest part of the road.
It is. It's the worst one. It's being one of the last ones done. And the Village naturally is the last one being done. So that's why they're doing south of Pittsburgh, because it's easy and not affecting traffic like they've screwed up traffic for the last three years in Brandon. They don't want to typically-
They would do one segment at a time.
People are used to traffic being messed up once in a couple of years.
Oh, I know. Yeah, I got it.
Couple of 20.
Yeah.
We're trying to stay here now.
It's going to be done someday, anyway.
Well, we'll, most of us here-
Are you sure, Jeff?
We're here. It'll be a different board.
Once it's done, you won't see any here. You'll just see, all you'll see is a skull.
I hear you.
All right. Needless to say, we were rather disappointed by our business.
Yes, it's a long drive home.
Yeah.
Sorry to hear it.
I wasn't shocked or surprised by you, but we did have one strong supporter on the board. He felt it was well worth doing.
All right. That's the extent of our business this evening.
That's it.
Public business. We have executive session stuff.
We think everybody's coming?
Thank you.